All right, today is Friday, March 3rd, 2023. It's 2:30. There's a motion to call the meeting to order.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, on nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, we've got a bunch, bunch of stuff on the agenda. We don't have any minutes. We have meeting mail. First item under appointments is... It has to do with Alan's truth. Mr. Kelly?
Yeah. This was a discussed previously. And because the timeframe was going to run out, the board authorized me to sign for the town the request for the abatement. This needs to be put on the agenda. So I would ask that it go on to the next meeting. And the information is in plus.
Right, so we're not taking any action tonight? Tonight? Is there a reason why we can't take actions tonight?
If you wanted to take it, you can. The review of man is presented votes to be taken as allowed.
Make a motion to approve both payments, both parcels.
I'll say again. All those in favor?
Aye.
I spoke with Mr. Finney as well to schedule a meeting with Mr. Kelly. We just got to get our timeframes back and forth because the family's not happy with how this transpired over the years.
Next item on the agenda is our budgets. Mr. Kelly?
The first budget on the agenda is the golf enterprise budget. I would ask the chair, since also on the agenda under old business is proposed salary ranges for FY '24, that the board put the two items together. And the board can then decide whether they want to address them now or in the future.
Okay. Who's going to the presentation with golf? Is it Dana?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Thanks for taking the time to review this year's budget submissions. Steve and I just met with the finance committee the other day. Did our presentation, explained to them basically. We've discussed and reached out to all of our vendors with regards to our budgets and our interest in getting supplies for the upcoming season, what the anticipated cost increases were. And that was reflected in our budget submission with regards to the line items below the salaries. As far as the salaries submitted, we submitted our suggestions and requests to the golf committee. It was communicated that you guys have the final say, obviously, in salaries. And so they zeroed out and flatlined, level funded the salaries at this point for salaried employees. But we did put an increase in for clubhouse employees as well as maintenance employees. And that is, let Steve speak to his, his group. As far as my group, the golf committee has expressed with the increased play that we have and the addition of ranges that we put on last season to put up, to assist with the operation and the volume of play. They wanted to see some additional services, some more support with regards to people in the pro shop, bag boys doing, you know, cleaning cots more consistently, addressing some other issues. So that's the increase as far as the clubhouse employees. Year to date, though, if I were to check the budget, I'm not even 50% of the way through. I don't know if you guys have checked the, our expenses for this fiscal year, but I'm not even 50% of the way through my current allocation for this fiscal year. So depending on what the golf committee decides to do for services and how many of those hours they plan to use will determine what is used out of that submission, that number submitted. Now, obviously, my side of the operation, it's supply and demand. We can kind of control it the day it rains. Everybody don't come in, stay home. His guys have a different story. So I have a little bit more control over mine as it compares to with demand and weather conditions. So I don't know if you guys have any questions with regards to those line items and salaries?
And I think, I mean, look, the golf course is an entity of its own, right? Yes, Suenwater is an enterprise account, but that's just an accounting issue, right? The golf course is there to make money. If you're going to run a business, you're going to invest in the operation, right? If you don't have happy customers and you don't have the staff there to support, you know, the customers. And especially nowadays, I mean, people demand customer service.
Correct.
They want to go golf, want a good experience. You can't expect them to pay, you know, for fees and not get their return on investment.
Correct.
And so...
And it's a competitive market at this point.
Right.
As things progress out of COVID. And actually, up through the last 10 years, there are courses that died on the vine, you know? Parked on, we knocked them out. And other places start to struggle. We, we do our job quite well. And we've been, you know, been rewarded with a little bit more customer loyalty in that respect.
Dave, so the golf committee, you know, has debated this and talked about it. And what, just want to get your perspective. I know it's hard for you, Dana, as you guys, as the staff. But I want to get your, your perspective.
Yes, correct. It was, you know, the balance between what you feel you can afford and looking at it. But also, like, as Dana was saying, supporting the customer. Right, we're looking to, as he was alluding to, adding some of the hours on his side, so to speak, for keeping sure that the carts that we invest in stay clean, that we're greeting the customers, keeping the pace of play moving to the extent we can without annoying the customer. You don't want to be so pushy that they get annoyed, but you also want to keep things moving so you don't feel slow. So adding some hours to his staff. Jamie, we're going to do it. Hopefully adding a little bit of pay increase to the maintenance staff to keep the course in the good condition that we can so we can attract and retain the amount of staff we need to keep the course. Because as you know, without a real amenity is at the course. The amenity is the course itself, right? So my priority has always been, at least for right now, is to keep the course in the best condition it can be. Because that's what, number one, going to bring people back.
Right.
And they have been coming back.
So what's the, what's the bottom line? Like, you know, if the board approved all that, what's the hit to the budget? Like, let's see.
It's still $201,000. $201,741 to be exact. The bottom line number.
Mr. Chairman?
Some of that is inside of their debt.
Yep.
Principle and interest, though.
Mr. Chairman, at the finance committee, the Dana and Steve were stressing their high level for rounds is 42,000.
Yes.
And their average is?
We're falling around 37. That's what we did last year. And that's probably pretty much where we're going to fall at this point. Unless, I mean, obviously, if a recession hits, disposable income disappears, that, that's going to impact you. But all things being the same, we've hit this level of demand and it's been pretty consistent as COVID has kind of let up. I was just checking today, your, the fallback on the rounds has occurred on the weekday, obviously, because everybody's back at work. So not everybody has all that money just to hang out and go play golf. So you lose a percentage going back to work. But on the other side of it, our weekends are still standing strong. Our outings are still standing strong. Those are our highest price points. And we still see a strong demand from the retirement community and the guys that have days off during the week in the summer. So in the weekdays, there is potential there to get some more back, you know, closer to the COVID numbers. You won't ever achieve that number unless something drastic like that occurs again. But that's the target goals. For me anyways, I know some people don't feel comfortable with that number, but I'll, I'll speak to it every chance I get. 42,000 rounds was a lot. And if I could put 45 through, I would do it again and happy.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman? Rounds and what we can, our rounds and what we can afford for rounds also has to consider the fact that your facility has to be able to support those. You can't go out and say, I want to have 50,000 rounds, beat the pants off your golf course without expecting to increase the cost, but also decrease the playing conditions. So you have to find a comfortable medium. And I think our comfortable range right now is between 35,000 and 40,000 rounds. I think you'll be able to approach 40,000 and 42 again. That depends on the golf market. I mean, a lot of people want to say COVID was great for golf. I don't think it so much was COVID as the fact that younger people and other people are starting to rediscover golf. Golf is something that all four members or all members of the family can do together.
Right.
It's not an exclusive sport. It's not exclusive by size. It's not exclusive by weight. It's not exclusive by age.
Sex.
Sex or age.
Right.
So it's, and younger people are starting to discover that it's nice to be able to get out and not only be able to play a sport, but also be able to, to be outside and enjoy the outside when you're doing it.
Assuming I'm reading this correctly, the personnel aspect of this, right, is right around 80,000-ish, right? An increase, 63 on the maintenance and 13-ish on, on the operations side of it. So the other increases are like, you know, seeing like equipment leases and all this other stuff.
Yeah, the big pieces of it were the leases for golf carts, which you need, and equipment to cut the grass.
Yep.
While, while we're on the subject of rounds, well, at least we worked two seconds ago. And you've brought out the high numbers from COVID, right? And we know how good of years we've had there. What was the average number of rounds in 2017, 18, and 19 versus 20 and 21 when COVID hit?
We were falling around 33, I think.
32, 33.
Because we always, I think your numbers are always around 30, 32-ish.
Yes, yes. And but that, in our discussions with the golf committee, that was kind of like the spot where we want to, that's the lowest we want to be, is around that number. We can survive on 32,000 rounds by controlling our costs. However, you know, the things just led to where it led with COVID. And we've, because the course is, is a great track. It's, it's a phenomenal layout. Steve keeps great conditions out there. And the customer service and loyalty that we have with our customer base, it's kind of, it's drawing people in. And we're seeing a consistent level of demand while the economy is good. So, I mean, there are a lot of factors that come into play. But right now, we are more than holding our own against the competition.
So with the previous years going, staying on salaries, the previous year's salaries increased 100,000, roughly $100,000 in the previous year, year over year. And now they are going up another 60,000 in salaries again.
Well, not salaries, that's wages for the workers. Myself and Steve having...
So it's a combination of both, right? It's more staff and higher wages.
Well, the year...
160, it's a composite of both.
It's primarily higher wages. We're trying, you know, and if you'll notice, the significant expense and increases for my staff. I'm trying to be competitive with what's out there in the marketplace. In years past, we haven't been competitive. And the only reason, to be quite honest with you, that we've been able to maintain our staff and maintain the conditions is because of the retired folks that I have working for me.
The local guys?
The local guys, two or three of which are town residents who have been working there 15, 16, and 17 years.
Most of my guys have been there 15 to 19 years. And they're the same crowd.
Just within the last two years, that level of dedicated employee finally reached what people were getting paid on an hourly wage to flip burgers at McDonald's. And right now, out in the marketplace, the going rate for entry-level, non-experienced labor in our industry is a minimum of $17 an hour. The minimum on equipment operators, which is the minimum level of experience right now, has been in advertisements that I've seen discussing with other superintendents, $18 an hour. So what we've decided, what we've done, and I, you know, we've, as Mr. Kelly alluded to, there's an item on the agenda about wage rates for proposed moving forward. That's where we are now. And that's why this number has increased. We're only adding, that represents the addition of two positions. One is a part-time position, which approximates 20 hours a week. And the only other position would be a full-time equipment operator. And that still keeps us at 14, basically 14 staff members, including myself.
Great. Mr. Gasper?
I, so I don't know anything about your analysis with, with where your pay grades are. I don't have that backup documentation. I will request that from Mr. Kelly to share that with the board. That's something I'd like to see because it puts us in an awkward spot with, and I keep saying this, with other employees.
Sure.
Regardless of where we're at. So it's something that we have to take a careful measure when we're looking at different things and making salary adjustments for our employees, hence contract negotiations, whether it be unions, enterprise funds, whatever it may be. It puts this board in a very difficult position.
Absolutely.
So before I start upping salaries, Mr. Isaac came in three weeks ago and we bumped the minimum wage up to, I think it was 1550 or 16 bucks an hour instead.
My, my guys, bag boys get paid minimum wage 15. And then my stylists and rangers and grill guys get paid 1590, I think.
That's fine. So all I'm saying is, looking at the previous years and looking at this year again with salaries going up, I'd like to look at the scope of, of the business.
Sure.
How many employees we have, where those employees are.
Okay.
What the new difference is in the cost of higher salaries. And look at that structure and see what we're doing.
We can talk to payroll and full reports and give you...
Okay, I, I know how, I know how.
I've got that for, for my staff, I've got that already. As a matter of fact, I provided that to Mr. Isaac at the beginning of the year when we were approaching this discussion on pay rates. I've had a, actually, the pay rate ranges that we're going to be discussing today is the third iteration of pay rate calculations that I've done. Actually, I believe Mr. Kelly got the second iteration. And we went back and, at his request, then I went back and shaved that and remodeled that. So if...
Right, so that's the, that's the part that we haven't seen, right? Is what has been discussed, unfortunately, that hasn't been discussed with this board, which is the ultimate decision.
Yeah.
Right now, I'm not comfortable looking at this budget and saying, yeah, I'm ready to approve it regardless of whether it's an enterprise fund or not. We're going to be talking about our other enterprise funds today.
Unstoppable.
Looking at that salary increase thing, I'm not for that right now until I better understand what it is in the minds of the committee members, what it is in the minds of what we're going to do and how we can approach that and maybe make that adjustment. I don't know that yet. I don't have that backup yet to see what we're talking about.
Would the, would the ranges then or wages depending on dollar amounts, are they seen in, in competition with other town departments? Are they seen lower or are they seen higher?
I don't, I don't know any of that. That's what I want to look at. I want to look at where our pay structure is, right? What, in these salary bills over the last two years, what is new staff to make that $160,000 increase in the last two years in salaries? I want to see what that structure looks like. New employees, take that number, minus it off the 160, know what we've been doing, where we've been, where we're going, and how to better staff, hopefully, better staff, if Mr. Flynn has kind of alluded to that, so that we can handle the extra rounds of golf. And I think that's where really what Mr. Flynn's talking point is. And it makes sense is if you have a lot more customers coming flushing through the door and you only have three people on staff to handle this many customers and now you have 100 more a day, you're probably going to need additional staff. And that's what I think we need to understand a little bit better to be able to accommodate a successful golf course.
As far as my side of it, real quick, I didn't add anybody. I've kind of cannibalized my own people at certain spots where COVID hit. So I lost my pro shop help. Golf committee wanted ranges. So those hours went right to the ranges. Didn't use a beverage cot on weekdays, just because the grill setup is as such, one through six, seven, eight, nine, you come through and then you disappear. So for me, the weekday wasn't a spot for a beverage cot. So I used those hours again to, you know, cannibalize and use those for bag boys on the weekends. And so my head count is basically stayed the same. And I've just put people in different places with their requests.
Maybe that theory needs to be addressed as well, right? Maybe your time, being the premium person making the money, shouldn't be collecting money from customers or washing golf carts. You should be taking care of the business side of things and drawing in more customers so that we, with this staff, we can afford to pay them and not be taking surplus.
In that timeframe, when COVID hit, it was, it was...
I get what you did. I get what you did. Your business, why you did it. And that was great, Dave. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not...
Well, I know, I'm just, I want to clarify. Everybody gets the same perception.
How do we make it more successful is the goal, I think, of this board. I won't speak for my members, the members of the board, but I think we're all sitting here saying, how do we make the golf course more successful so we can stop buying the things that we were told we were going to buy? Fire engines, police cars, whatever it may be, ambulances with some of that money? Because that was the, the theory out in the public. We've been operating for 20 something years. We haven't bought anybody anything, so...
Well, as you know, you throw that, that theory out there to the public and it takes on a life of its own.
It's out, it's out there.
Right, but you just stated seven different things where initially, they might have mentioned one, one thing. And now, all of a sudden, we're supposed to be financing everybody. But that, and I, we've had our own discussions with this.
It's all public safety.
I mean, I can't, I can't speak to what happened when they decided to build a golf course in Cushinga. But I can tell you that sitting there and trying to justify the construction of a golf course simply because it's going to provide you for money for something else shouldn't have been their main objective. The golf course is there to provide a recreational opportunity, but it's also as a benefit to the town for open space and so on. That should have been the primary focus with additional funds going forward to provide opportunities to the town. But at the time, the person who said that should have explained that you're not going to have a significant amount to provide in funds until you pay off your debt. And unfortunately, because you're a municipality, you weren't allowed to pay off the debt sooner by making larger payments, if I'm not mistaken. So you couldn't cut the debt down. You could simply refinance it and get a better finance, right?
That's the whole thing that I was going to go back to. We actually, this board, well, members, certain members of this board actually did do that and cut that debt from the 550,000 it used to be to the 350 it used to be. And we said, that doesn't mean you make $200,000 less.
That just means...
It's just, we're taking that burden off because golf wasn't going so well at that time. We, we wanted to, we had to really do that to make that golf course survive. So if, if, if that's not going to be the theory and we're looking at higher salaries, higher salaries translate into what? Higher pension costs. And we got a line item on here. We've had this discussion before about indirect costs. If you're going to continue to pay higher salaries and at some point, this board needs to have a real conversation about collecting indirect costs for pensions. Because that's going to start coming home to roots and our taxpayers are going to pay that bill.
Well, I, I understand that. But even though, as I had mentioned at the finance committee meeting, up until Mr. Noble became town administrator here in town, no one had ever mentioned the fact of what the...
Separate indirect costs.
Indirect costs for pensions.
What indirect costs were. I didn't even know they existed. They were never mentioned. So my question first was, okay, we have indirect costs and obviously, we have to pay indirect costs. What are they? What's A, indirect, B, C, D, and E? And let us sit down, figure out how we can work this into the budget. Just don't show up one day like Mr. Noble did and say, you need to put another 120,000 bucks into your budget.
Yeah, I think the number was a lot higher than that. And I, and I disagree with a lot of his indirect costs, right?
Well, you got to put, like, hey, like, you want to know the labor numbers and all that? I mean, when they say indirect costs, we have to have the breakdown and understand it, right?
What I'm saying is, is when we, you start approaching this level of salaries, we're not so worried. I, I've never been worried about the guy or girl making 17, 18 bucks an hour. That's not what this conversation is about. It's just, it's about, we have some folks that are in that area of retirement and their salaries are high salaries. When you look at that person kicking out, where's that salary? Where's that pension coming from? Then you have to replace that person. So it can't be coming from here. It's going to be coming from somewhere else. And it shouldn't be technically the taxpayer because the golf course technically has nothing to do with a taxpayer.
So in, in response to that, then, is there a means through which we can start to look at that? And I would be more than happy, and I think the golf is so... I mean, can we create a line item in our budget?
It's already in your budget.
What's...
It's already in your budget. It's just, it's left blank. Fringe benefits is up at the top.
We have the salaries, we have the assistant... Look at the assistant collector, that's, that's an indirect cost. You have the fringe benefits, that's an indirect cost.
That's healthcare, isn't it, James?
Insurance.
That's the healthcare, that's the, it's the healthcare part. So if you go down to indirect cost, it's the last one on your budget. Says indirect cost and it's been blank for a lot, for a long time, right? We've been having that conversation and I disagree with a number of town administrators that the number that they originally gave you, and I probably still have that sheet of paper, was probably closest to $200,000 than it was a buck and a quarter. I can tell you that right now. And I totally disagree with that because it was the town administrator wanted 10 bucks for his salary, $5 for this guy's salary. It was all a bunch of mumbo jumbo. All I'm doing is saying, if you're going to increase salaries, right?
Yeah.
You have to, you have to start, you have, and I understand that aspect, but you have to start considering pensions.
Sure.
Okay, so how do we, so, you know, again, how do we do that? And how can we start doing that so we don't have a dash across from indirect costs?
It's a, it's a much deeper conversation for this board to start having with the town administrator. I'm not saying that's happening for this year's budget, right? But we need to look at the whole golf course enterprise fund as a whole. It's been a long time since this board's really sat down with the microscope and looked at the golf course budget and speak with you folks, the committee members, management committees there for a reason. Settle out any indifferences that that might be happening. Because I know those are, those are happening, but we're not being involved in those conversations when we should be to try to rectify it because we're all here for one common goal, right? Is to make money.
Yes.
So I think that's where we're at. And as far as the budget goes, look, you guys have done a good job with your budget. I'm not saying that. All I'm saying is, is salaries have increased $160,000 in two years. We need to, I would like to better understand why they've moved $160,000 and, and what we have for staffing. And perhaps visit you and, and Steve and say, you know, hey, I, I'll go on the maintenance thing, look at what's going on, see, see what everybody's job titles are and everything else and say, hey, do we need more? We might, I don't know. We, we could end up coming to the conclusion where your time is more valuable someplace else. And if I could put somebody in that $18 an hour slot, let's do that.
So could I speak to that for a second?
Sure.
Because I, I keep getting that from certain members on the golf committee and other people within the town hall, as well as yourself. When you're running the golf course and you're aware of where your budget is at monthly and in, not so much with the COVID times because that was just a matter of grinding people through and getting them out to play. Prior to that, though, the reason why we're here at this point is because I'm running at the helm, doing that job. And I'm looking at, all right, we had X amount of rain days. We're behind by X amount. What's our tee sheet look like this week? All right, we need to squeeze the tee time every hour on the hour because we got to get that back. get that back. And that's over fifteen years of doing that. That's why we have the luxury to stand here and talk about what our enterprise fund is worth right now. And then I, on the other side of it, I get slapped in the face for being at the helm for, for running with the joystick and making it happen, I, I, you know what I mean?
I don't think you deserve to be slapped in the face, so if whoever's doing that, I apologize for that, right? It's not fair to you as an employee, buddy. I think it's, it's, it brings in that conversation where this board needs to be more engaged.
Speaking of, Mr. Hankley, hold on, Steve. This is, it's a great discussion, but Bob, I know you've, this is a relatively new process for you with a golf course. I know you're absorbing stuff, but I want to make sure that we're not monopolizing the conversation.
I just wanted to ask Mr. Gasper, what, what can I provide to you? Is it historical? Because earlier you asked for the information that, that came to this. Do you want to give historical information? I can give you, uh, histories, well, I mean, individuals' histories, you know, pay histories and so on. I just wanted to know what.
You could just go back and look at what staff looked like, you know? Two thousand seventeen and what we've done over the last five years, right? And whether or not we need to make more of an adjustment or can we tweak what we have and change things around to better facilitate? Guys like Dana, you know, he's, he's talking like he's jumping through hoops and, and I know he's done that, especially through the COVID years, but hey, maybe that's not the right thing to be doing, how to manage a golf course, that's all.
Um, Mr. Chairman, the only question I really had, um, not golf cart leases per se because I know that cost goes up, but equipment leases. Going back to twenty-one, it just pretty much doubles until it gets to this year and then it's, you know, about fifty thousand dollars more. What kind of equipment? Is it more equipment or are the costs of these leases going up?
Well, it's, it's not more equipment. Basically, we're replacing things that we have that have been gotten to the point where it's, it's cost prohibitive to continue operating them. The cost of them has gone up. Um, I'll give you, you know, just a recent example. And you, in December of twenty twenty-one, we placed an order for a fairway mower.
Yep.
That fairway mower, at that time, the cost of that machine was sixty-two thousand five to us. That's with Mass State bid list discount and so on. Normal cost of that machine, seventy grand. That's, uh, that was the price to us. I just spoke to my distributor today, that machine is supposed to be delivered the end of this month, March of twenty twenty-three. So that's a year and a while away, and now that machine's going to cost us sixty-nine thousand five hundred. So just that kind of gives you the idea of where the cost for iron is going.
True.
And the thing that sometimes people have a hard time understanding is, is that in golf, uh, golf course, um, yes, we are cutting grass, but we're not cutting grass the way folks normally think we are. We have thirty-three acres of fairways, and in order to cut those thirty-three acres in a timely fashion to permit golf without interfering with golf as well as the other cultural practices we have to do, we have to be out of the way in five hours. That's the minimum of two machines. Both of those machines in excess of sixty thousand dollars. Greens, same way, greens mower right now, thirty-four thousand five to us. That's not the cost to the, the country club or somebody else because we do get Mass State bid list, plus we don't have the tax. Your question in regard to leases, um, I'm not a big proponent of leases because we pay finance charges and we lose money. The only time I was a proponent of leases is when we were on a, back in two thousand six, um, sat down with Mr. Cutino and we came up with a five-year equipment replacement program. And all the equipment was, either, I don't remember if it was bonded or leased, but it was, you know, with, with that type of approach, you can bring in a larger amount of equipment at a single time at a better price.
True.
And what you can do is you can avoid the major things of having to replace hydraulic motors, having to do major work on, on diesel engines, having to do major, for instance, major reel replacement. I mean, our, whatever cuts our greens and our tees and our fairways, what people normally call short grass, is cut with a reel motor as opposed to a rotary mower. Rotary mowers are single blade like people cut their home when this spins this way. A reel mower spins forward, it either has seven, eleven, fourteen, or fifteen blades on it. Over the course of three to four years, between top dressing sand and cutting seven days a week, in some instances, you lose the meat on the reel. Can't grind it anymore, you can't sharpen it. Each individual reel, the reel itself is four thousand dollars. So that's why you want to approach equipment and not have it seven, eight, nine years where you have to replace all of that and you're really losing more money on the machine.
True.
Something like a tractor, those type pieces of equipment, yes, you can keep them long. Right now, we currently have four items, I believe, that are on lease, a fairway mower, a rough mower, a greens roller, and I don't remember the, I think there was one other, I'm not, I'm not sure. There's two, there's a Wells Fargo lease and a PNC lease. And the question that we're discussing now, or should be discussing with the golf committee is the fact that we have that fairway mower delivered and do we want to buy it outright or do we want to lease it? And Dave could probably answer those questions because he's better at those accounting type things than I'll ever be.
Well, I think too, also, we mentioned with the finance committee's previous, when time for, when we first started out, Steve, we were buying all equipment at once. And then we kind of did a phase in and Steve would prioritize, keep track of his equipment. The work, uh, what is it, the man hours, working hours on it, and then he would give them a breakdown of, listen, these are the pieces that you should think about, you know, replacing. So at one point, we'd do them all at once and now we're doing piece by piece, so you might be seeing the incline of re-instituting, you know, pieces that need to be replaced.
The only thing I was going to add to that is, again, the cyclical pattern of what it is, like, so the greens and fairway mowers are sixty to eighty thousand dollars a piece. But then there's also, you know, hand equipment that might be fifteen, twenty thousand, so as lease payments come on and drop off, you're also going to see that. If you look back in time as to which piece of equipment was currently leased, dropped off, and then maybe a more expensive piece of equipment came on.
That's what the other machine was, by the way.
So this is going to be a work in progress. I'm just going to make a couple observations based on the conversation today. What I find, first of all, Dana, as, as Mr. Gasper said, if you're getting criticized for doing your job or going above and beyond your job, I, I just, it's, it seems insane to me that you would be criticized for having an all hands on deck approach and just doing whatever it takes to get the job done. The fact that you are cleaning taps and flipping burgers and do whatever it takes on behalf of the town and on behalf of the operation as a manager is a shout out, that should be commended.
Yeah.
And I've always felt, as we're discussing salaries, um, you know, our leadership guys are on the hook for the, for the, the success of that golf course, not the, not the hourly wage employees. And I've always maintained that, yes, you have a base salary, but like in other businesses, if we do well, you should share in a percentage of that, and I would urge you guys to consider that, a bonus opportunity for our management who at the end of the day is responsible for the success of that course. And that's what goes on in the private sector, and this is as close to the private sector as you'll see. But that's just my opinion. That said, earmuffs on to you three, which is, I think the golf course is a great, great thing for the town and it's great for open space, but with all due respect, we're at a, a critical time from a operational standpoint for the town. And if it's something that, like, we can't understand that it's an enterprise account that we've got to invest in and the town can't handle that, then I would just assume turn it into the biggest growth facility in the country, and this town wouldn't have to worry about one thing from a tax standpoint and.
Those are your options.
In the fifty minutes that we've just burnt on this conversation, is something that we're going to have to do it again.
Well, you know.
But I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, like, honestly, I think the golf course is amazing.
It's a great foundation.
But as a municipality, we can't understand the value in investing in that resource, then it's probably something that we don't deserve. So I'll just leave it at that. But I'm confident that we will see the value in, in understanding the investment that we have to make into it for it to succeed, but if we can't handle it, then, you know, City in Bedford took the whale and it's going to turn into an industrial park and.
It's best because the train stations run through there, the city, you know?
I'm just saying, right? Like, as a town, you got to think.
We're going to get hit with that housing crap too, just so you know.
Oh, yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, if you're looking at a situation where we, we had two substantially good years. So my question is, you know, and I'm, I probably get, you know, I probably get asked for this, but why can't we now, if there is a need in a certain area or two in the town, and Mr. Kelly would be able to answer this question because I can? Okay, so we had two successful years, take fifty, sixty thousand dollars out of that fund and transfer it into one of those places where it's needed. I don't see why not. I mean, it's, we're all in the town, we're all employees in the town, we're all part of the town, we all need to help each other, so I would be, you know, would have to do that, but I don't know, is, is that something that can be done? I mean, can you take monies from an enterprise fund and, and put it into another, another town entity?
There's something in the original language, and I have original.
It's only for capital expenditures and.
So I think it was for public safety and recreational, and that's it. Cut, fine line, cut and dry, so we'll look into that.
Real of the bonds outstanding.
Number three is just a status report, you know, last fall, I had asked for, you know, we authorized you to hire a consultant to help with the business plan and to chart the next path for the golf course, where, I mean, I don't know where we are with that, and that would help me decide whether or not.
Would it, would it help to have you folks issue an RFP?
I thought we did, I mean.
Mr. Hankley has been in touch with that person that you were on the email with, and we need to get an official, official proposal back from him.
All right, it's fine, I, I never like to publicly.
And it's good business sense.
This was like August, right?
We've talked about it several times.
We were trying to make sure the proposals other than ten thousand, so we wouldn't have to go through the RFP or proposals.
Okay, I would, I would, please move that process forward because I think that's going to help everybody understand what, what the potential is over there, so. All right, thank you.
Would you like to address, as Mr. Kelly mentioned, the rate ranges now?
We already did that, I thought.
We're just going to hold off on all this.
And then wait until we get that back up on how we derived the certain things, like that staff.
To Mr. Kelly.
Are you, are you, you're there all week?
Excuse me?
You down at the golf course all week, what hours?
This time, well, this time of the year, until we reopen, we work ten-hour days Monday through Thursday. And my, my guys like to have a three-day, a three-day weekend in the winter.
Sure, sure.
And then, um, starting, I'm probably looking at the twentieth as when we go back to our regular schedule, depending on what happens tonight and then next Tuesday with the snow and all the rest of that fun stuff.
It causes always weather permitting, right?
Yes.
And you, Dana, you around or?
Uh, yeah, I'm around.
I'm there from five o'clock in the morning until about three, three-thirty in the afternoon.
Well, see, that's me twenty-nine, about when I wake up.
Well, you know, there's, there's never any traffic early in the morning, it's always in the middle of the night.
All right, thank you, thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, DPW.
Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, just so the board knows, is also on the agenda, we received a communication from New Bedford concerning the water and wastewater rate increases, so I would suggest that in this discussion, you could play the discussion with all of that.
Sounds good.
And DPW budget.
All right, like, um, we'll start with, right, with the highway? Just highway frame? All right. Um, okay, the only thing that changed in the, in the salary was it's contractual, it's one of them was for longevity, was for Ann, she just got her five-year term. What else we got in there? That's the same thing with clerical, that was for us. And the permanent position, that one was, um, we got a few guys at the ten-year step, and then it was the paving thing that we got in there too as well, additional hours we put in for the paving.
Mr. Jim?
Yeah.
On the, on the salaries, the, the permanent positions?
Yep.
That number seems to be off by my calculations.
Well, there was also put in for, um, one of the, um, Mr. Ford actually, so that was going to be, some of that was towards his, you know, payout when he gets out, which hopefully is becoming up shortly, so that we wanted to add it to the next year's budget to cover his, like, um.
Mr. Kelly?
We can do that through compensated balances.
That was my comment.
Okay, so that's, I'm not sure that exact number, so that's something we can work out if you want to take that, that can come out.
Kath probably has that number figured out already.
Yep.
So just to adjust that out.
Yep, all right, no worries.
And then make sure that the number's.
Okay.
Back to you. That's all on salaries.
Okay, going down the expenses, um, the only increase that we had, one was again for the, that's a clothing allowance and that was for the boot thing, which was in their contract. And the next one was the energy and that's just on years passing and what we've been paying and what it's been going up to, so.
You comfortable on gasoline, Dan?
Uh, gasoline, again.
It's the biggest part of your budget.
Yeah.
Well, it's stuff of salaries, but, stuff of salaries, but down on this expense side, the, the gasoline, we're looking at a budget of one forty-nine, two hundred?
Yep. So roughly, I mean, we're, we have one forty-five now and it's kind of, it's, that's a tough one because it's up and down.
I know.
So, I mean, we're, we're good, I can see like we got this year, where we're at, we got, um, sixty-seven left over at this point, you know, we were one forty-five, so at my sixty-seven now, we're over halfway, so, I mean, I, I think we're uncomfortable with that number, you know what I mean? It's close, but that's another one that's really tough to, to, to say, it's up and down, it's crazy.
Burning, burning roughly ten thousand a, a month?
Yeah, roughly. It's up, you know, we do gas every month, diesel's usually, um.
We look pretty good if gas stays stabilized, you know? Plus or minus twenty cents, it ain't going to fluctuate that much. Well, I'm not saying gasoline's not going to fluctuate that much, but I'm saying that if, if we plus or minus from the, deviate, plus or minus, even plus, just going plus, not minus, because obviously you have more money in the hole.
Yep.
In the green, but even if we went up another quarter from now based on your run rate, it looks like we're safe.
Yep.
Actually, it's a whole different ballgame, I get it, and this is not, the, the problem is, is this is not just DPW's issue, because many people, departments that use those, that pump for gasoline, so this is not just solely a DPW line item.
It's every, it's actually police, fire, it's everything.
There's a few other budgets that have gasoline in it, but not.
Yeah.
You know, this isn't all.
Well, it's like the other, we get the enterprise funds that it takes out of, but this covers every department, you know, council and agent, EMA, everybody, so. I mean, again, if they get more police calls, whenever they're out there more, they're going to be burning more fuel, you know what I mean? It's all relative to that, so it's kind of, but like I said, basically over the years past, that's what we've been kind of running at and kind of going with the flow of that and just hopefully they stabilize a little bit, but it's.
Looks good.
Crazy, okay? And the only, the other one down is in the memberships, I got one, well, I got one increase on the, uh, the training and testing, and that's, um, the reason for that is that we're actually looking for a new guy there to replace Paul, and currently, we, we put an ad out the last time and, um, looking for CDL, people with CDLs already, and we're unable to get anybody interested, so, um, the last guy we, which was Tyler, we got and, um, we put him out, but now they have to have training. We used to be able to train in-house and then just take the guy for his license.
Right.
Now the, the, you know, Armored V there, they just, they don't let you do that anymore, so you have to send him out for training, so we had to put him in a school, an actual school ago.
Right.
And that was close to four thousand, I believe, close to four thousand dollars to send him over here for the training. So they take him for the permit, they, you know, do all the bookwork with him and then they take him out and that includes their truck and trailer and whatever and takes them out for the test as well, so. So that would be for that other guy, when Paul comes, because I don't, unless we can get somebody, you know, that has it, but fortunately we haven't.
They're all working at McDonald's.
Yeah. Maybe, I don't know, it's tough, but, um, so that was that one, and then the other, only other one in that was, um, was the licenses and memberships, which, that was for, um, the truck testing went up for the guys, and then the, that's paid for the hoisting licenses as well.
Your overall budgets for the size of your budget is only thirty-four thousand dollars, and once we back out that number, that's going to compensated balances.
Yeah.
That, that number could be half the increase, so that's pretty, pretty good for a budget your size and a, and a department as yours is, the needs of a DPW, right?
I mean, that's, that's, to be honest, I've always wondered, like, here we just spent forty-five minutes talking about the golf course.
Yep.
I mean, are we truly investing in a department that has a major responsibility with aging roads and infrastructure? And I just wonder sometimes, if I look at the DPW, you've got a team of what, eleven? Ten on a good day?
Ten including them.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, are, are there things that we're not doing because we're not investing in that department? And if we had a larger crew, better equipment, could we given, could we be giving the taxpayer a better bang for their buck? You know, I know that we don't, obviously, we don't charge, you know, trash fees, but I just look at it, you know, are we missing out on true infrastructure projects because are we missing out on true infrastructure projects because we're, we're always trying to do things on the cheap? And we, are we really investing in our infrastructure the way we should be?
Correct, I've talked to Mr. Gaspere a few times about that. I'm, I'm totally for that, I, I think, you know, I've been telling you we should have a construction.
That question is like going into the second grade, asking if you want more camp.
Yeah, no, I mean, if you should have.
But I think it's something worth talking about, I mean, it's.
Mr. Chairman, one of the issues that the DPW has is even if we have vacant positions, you are having extreme difficulty filling those positions.
Because, because we're not competitive.
Well, it's, it's everybody, let's not, we keep going, we don't pay enough, we don't pay enough, but look, I, I come from the business community, everybody, you talk to anybody that's running a business right now, it is extraordinarily difficult to hire anyone, doesn't matter what category they're in. I don't care if it's, if you just look at our garbage service and it ain't getting picked up on Monday, which is my pickup day and it's because, oh, I talked to the garbage guy that goes by and he's like, hey, my recycling company? He's like, nah, not today, the guy banged out, oh, he quit. It doesn't matter what industry you're in, everybody's having a problem trying to hire people, it's, it's just, the world's gone stupid because of COVID, okay? The government, the federal government flushed everybody with money, created all this inflation and paying on the regular joke schmoes like myself and everybody else, and they got no answer for that now. We're all paying as consequences for it, and the only way that you could ever do what you're thinking of doing is higher taxes. That's the ultimate thing, right? We sat in classification, tax classification three months ago, it's, oh my God, we're gonna go to one fifty and, and I talked about it's the spending, right? And here we are doing budgets and we, we don't know what state aid's doing yet. We're looking at deficits and then whatever state aid's gonna do might offset a lot of that and alleviate some of the pain for this year, but it's the same thing over and over and over again, right? I mean, there's, there's, there's nothing else to do, nowhere else to go but tell the taxpayers, suck it up buttercup, I need more money. And if anybody's got the audacity to try to do that, good luck. Because people are already feeling the pain out in the community, the last tax bill cycle that just went out was a disaster. And I, you know, I've, I've said enough on that, but it's just, it, it does pain me because I would love to do more. And I've, I've had that feeling for years, I put, I'm the one responsible with, I think Selectman Warner was actually on the board too, but I'm the one that fought for that hundred thousand dollars extra in excise tax because we don't put a damn thing into the DPW out of excise. And we're using one point three five million dollars for every other damn reason for budgeting reasons, right? Where it shouldn't be because it was original intent for that tax was roads and bridges, but we never put a penny into it. And I'm the one that put that and fought for that hundred grand in your budget to do more road payment, and I had to fight for that. So, you know, we could argue that we want the one point three five back too, right? And we could put that in DPW's budget and say, tell everybody else, go cut your budgets, one point three five million dollars, wherever that money went.
It's, it's, you know, everything helps Kevin, that a hundred definitely helped and we, I think we've been, you know, we got our own pavement, we definitely been improving, you know, since I've got here. We've definitely gotten a lot more accomplished than was done in the past, you know, for the tax dollars.
Of course.
So, you know, it's little, little steps, I mean, we've been kinda going in little steps and even with the recycling center, you know, like, that's crazy, like now, we got that, Azure Cali, we got that swap shop loan there, we got that, you know.
A grant?
Grant from them and I tell you, that's a big hit and people really, you know, you know, use that a lot, you know, so.
Yeah, they're in there taking stuff and selling it on the side of the road, making money to pay their taxes.
It's all in my garage, my wife takes it all.
Call it in your garage?
Well, we've been recycling now, and you know, you think, actually, we're selling loan, selling the process stuff we have out of there, you know, we're getting some, it's not a fortune, but, you know, we definitely, we're using that for our roads. And I mean, so we're saving money that way, you know, so it's definitely.
And, and we do what we can, what we, the resources we have, right? It's, it's, it's one of those conversations, is we're sitting here talking about cuts and then on the other hand, we're talking about increases and you can't have both. There's no way you can have both, right?
It's priorities, it's reprioritizing, right? I mean, it's a thirty-five million dollar a year budget.
I know, but you mentioned garbage, you know, trash fees, so all you're doing is stealing from Peter, the paintball.
No, I'm saying we don't charge a trash fee Kevin.
I know, but I thought you, well, I thought you were, I was gonna take the trash, whatever that one.
No, no, I'm saying.
Or else, I mean, that's ludicrous.
Because we don't do that, which is the right thing to do, right? That's, those are resources, but we've got a thirty-three and change million dollar budget. And I feel historically, we don't invest in our infrastructure and we haven't, right? So it either goes to schools, it goes to police, fire, whatever, right? Are we missing out on chasing down grant funding, right? I mean, I've sit here year after year, watching opportunity go by the wayside where if we, if we tweak a bylaw here, if we do something there that could open us up for opportunity, you know, we're just sitting there because we just wanna stay the same way. So, that, that's, that's the, that's the message there.
You guys could put highway on?
I was.
Alright, well, next I got is C Mass.
C Mass is the next one for us Dan. Which is all your, all your increases contractual?
Yeah, that's everyone on there, so.
Out of our control?
Yep.
Snow and ice is the next one we have Dan.
And again, we just level funded that this year. We're gonna be close, you know what I mean, I don't know, we have, let's see. This is up to date without, but I didn't redo the salt yet. I got like fifty-nine, seven ninety-five left at my snow, so say sixty grand left in the end out as of today. But I still, that is not gonna, we still gonna pay the, the contract is that, that year-end bonus at thousands, it's like nineteen thousand, nineteen hides out there, so nineteen thousand.
With that perfect attendance of one storm.
But you know what, I'm kinda glad we do have that just because, you know, that's, you know, these guys paying probably twelve hundred bucks to keep their truck on the road for the, for the season, you know? So at least it covers, if they didn't have no snow, we probably wouldn't get none of them back next year, you know? That's what the problem is, if you don't have the snow, they can make any money and.
It's a gamble this board was willing to take to make sure the streets were clean for the residents, right?
You got nineteen guys out of that too?
Yeah, nineteen, yeah. Well, I used to have thirty-two on the first, so it kinda, it was going down, I ended up down to thirteen.
It's a dying, it's a dying trade.
Got a twelve with fourteen.
So, definitely helped.
Sure does.
Everybody showed up.
Yeah, no kidding. No kidding, of course, they were like, yeah, I'm gonna get paid a grand whether I do anything or not. But eh, you know what, like I said, it's a deal we made and keep up, up promise, hopefully it'll come back next year.
And what else I gotta, I gotta do the salt too, so I can fill that bond every, at the end of the year, because usually costs go up every year. So, right now it's getting kinda low, so I fill it before the, the end of the season, which is coming up, so that's.
We can deficits, that's the one, one budget we can deficit.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we're gonna eat it Kevin, but it's, it should be, it'll be close.
But we always pre-order our sand and salt for the next year, we're always ahead of the curve. So when next year comes, they don't have sand and salt, we, we're, we're ready to go, at least for a little bit of snowstorms, right? We don't even need snowstorms of sand.
So this one, this is, this, this is all stuff from last year.
Right, correct, that's what I'm.
I bring some sand in this year, but I did not bring any salt at all, so this will be the first salt.
It's like a pre-order.
Yeah, I kinda like using up the bond, this stuff gets old and gets crusty on the top, so I'll reuse the, you know what I mean, I like to use up the stuff we have in the bond and, you know, we should fill it.
Yeah, sorry, I seem to do.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Menard, I'm sure will tell you that ice storms and the like cost him more than snowstorms because of how he has to treat and everything else and the time involved. And I don't think the public understands that an ice storm is worse than a snowstorm for the budget.
I do.
Alright, keep going.
Alright. So, we did, we see mass, right, we got tons of snow, I guess, we, we go to water next?
Fireway?
Alright, and that first one, which is mine, originally this is the way the salaries were. It was, my, my salary gets diced up between highway, water and sewer. It was, it was eighty fifteen five when I first got here. When Julie was here, I don't know why, what happened, but we wound up switching it to eighty ten ten. So that's just reflecting going back to the eighty fifteen five.
Correct. That was a mistake on the previous town administrator.
I don't know why, maybe it was easier for the numbers, I don't know, but that's, so that's just reflecting switching to that.
Just a mistake.
Same thing, the salaries, that's, so now we had some staff and changes, because now I still didn't replace John Westgate, he retired. So that's, so now he's just working part-time till I can find somebody right now, so.
That's all that staffing changes means, I seen that, no, and I was like, what's staffing change? We haven't approved staffing changes, but I know we talked about.
From John.
John's thing, keeping him on for a little bit.
Yep.
Till we've, I backfill it obviously, if, if it happens.
Yeah, we'll see how that goes if we need the extra guy, and he's actually been good and he's coming in on, you know, for the water testing and stuff for me, the monthly testing. And again, that's clerical, that's Ann's. And Ann's again for the longevity at the bottom in salaries. Same thing now in that, that's the food allowance and that's for the water guys, that they got to get a contract this year. And that says the water, this is an estimate, we didn't actually get the, I didn't get that.
The rate increase yet?
From New Beffet, but that, so this was a.
Eight point three percent in water and six point seven percent roughly in sewer?
Okay.
Actually, Kathy's estimate was within one one hundredth percent.
Wow.
I mean, again, it's based on like years past and it's basically what you go with, or anything, it's.
Yeah, I just, I just based it on usage, we've been seeing an average usage for three to five years and then I base it on the increase that New Beffet has been seeing in the past few years because we do this before that letter comes out. If I can just get a copy of the letter, I know you just said you received it, so I.
You just got it.
I'll give you my copy, oh wait, but I wrote on my stuff, nevermind.
Okay, I'll get it.
Yeah.
You're within a hundred dollars.
Wow, I guess that's a good number still.
Dan, the budget, the budget, there's nothing there, right? The budget go, you go all the way down to the bottom to the expenses excluding the debt and everything else. The budget's up roughly a hundred grand and, and it's, it's pretty much all at ninety-six thousand of that's in the water paid to City of New Beffet. When you use your average, we, we sell roughly in the last two-year average, or three-year average, I use is roughly two hundred and twenty-five thousand we paid to the City of New Beffet, that's what I use for a number, and I just punched in the new rate. I did that, multiply it by the new rate for the City of New Beffet's water bills, and I come up with one point one and we outbudgeted one point two five.
Did you include the cost, we pay the member, the meter, we have meter fees, we have to pay.
Yeah, see, only thing I didn't add in, because I tried looking at the numbers and comparing them and it's kinda moving target and I didn't get that, so I was like, I know, forget with that actual number that we discussed, fifty or eighty grand, whatever the number was, so.
Yeah, because we've got the meter fees and then we got the, the PECM ones, which is all.
Yeah, they gave us all new fees for that too, so. That's all included, so all that meter stuff is all included into that, into that number.
Yes.
That's where that hundred and fifty that I'm probably looking at is intersecting. Okay, boss?
Alright. Alright, what else you got, that's in on water then?
Sewers.
Yeah, nothing else, nothing else changed, the debt stays the same for another thousand years.
Alright, thanks Dan. Any signature projects that you've got on, that you wanna tell us about, that you're thinking about?
Well, I got the two big ones I'm gonna be doing, I finally got the manholes for Mendel Road, I've been waiting for years for that one, I guess, you know, so. And I got the manholes coming also, should be in here in the spring, which I think I'm gonna tackle that one first. I like to do the.
That one?
Industry, correct, before they kinda close that down, so I wanna kinda at least get away from that bridge area with the drainage and then start going up to get that done for them. I got the pipe, I just gotta get the manholes and the guy called me two weeks ago, he said, he started making, so hopefully add them within a month or two. So, them are the kinda, the major ones we got going on, I got, we still gotta finish, I got a top coat, Clifford, the ones we did the drainage last fall.
Correct.
Clifford and Lawson, yeah, a little Lawson, yeah. So I, I still got some money in the asphalt, so yeah, we got a few things we're gonna.
We're waiting on, we're waiting on, so before you jump the gun, because Eversource is in there, that's why we let them go in there. Because you only have the base in there, yeah, but we're gonna talk to them about something, you know.
About Anthony Street.
We didn't discuss that yet, we can get nothing with Anthony yet, right? Them guys didn't.
I think it's on our list, we have a list in the office of the five.
I put it on the list like last year.
That's, we were waiting for, to settle after Eversource did the.
Yeah, it's been settled, it's been settled for nine months, so we, we, I think Jamie, we need to contact Anthony and have a conversation on what he's willing, what they're looking to spend there.
It's an easy one to remember. Alright, and then the gentleman that I had you go talk to, on is it off of, what was the street, Mr. David?
Yeah, refresh my memory, which was that?
Off of Tracy Street, I think it was. Remember this, last fall?
Oh yes, oh yeah, that's, there's a few streets over there, that's Earl and Helen Street.
Yes.
Them were all kinda, I, I would think, I don't know if I get it out of this year or something, but I think this year coming forward.
We're gonna go talk to him, did you?
Correct, that road, like I said, we went over there and that's, it's just, it's had it, you know, so there's a few streets in there that.
There's a lot of streets that have just had it though.
Yeah.
Because specifically, if I remember correctly, his, he needed a Burt, right, his?
Well, no, the road was kinda just busted all up and it's just falling apart, so when the plows and stuff go by, it's just shooting asphalt.
It's all over the west side of Middle Road too.
Yeah, you know what I mean, we got a lot of, but I mean, that one is really bad, that was gonna be one of the discussions, you know, for this year's. Try to get some of them in the paving, like.
Yeah, I went over, I've been dealing with the resident for quite some time and we got moved in about it.
Yep.
You guys are supposed to reach out to them.
Well, that should be, and I don't know, like I said, I can get it out of this year, so. Another thing we probably should look into is, I'm doing that little piece of Lawson, but that road's pretty bad too as well. You know, you almost should just do that whole street as well.
Lawson on both sides of something?
The one we're working on, on the drainage side, here where Clifford is, over there.
That goes up and down, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 when you ran the drain, like down, that's Dorothy, Dorothy Street's where you ran the drain.
Yeah, yeah, no, Cliff, Cliff is the one.
Mr. Chairman, we should probably have the board and Mr. Menard get together now that they've changed the chapter ninety to a two-year program instead of a single-year program, where they had in the past two hundred million statewide for chapter ninety. Now it's four hundred million, but it's over a two-year period. You could do a longer planning stage for your construction.
Under the governor's budget, did we, was there anything on chapter ninety? Did we receive any increase or, I was looking through and I knew.
We used to get like three sixteen.
Three fifteen, thirty sixteen.
Yeah, well, what they did was they authorized, in effect, double the money and you have two years to spend it.
Yeah.
To come up with the approval from the state, you can spend, take the one.
They're not giving us additional money, they're just, they're just saying, we're only gonna deal with you once in two years instead of once every year.
Yeah.
That's all they're doing.
Yeah.
It's kind of.
So, so, Mr. Menard.
Rearrange the cup?
I think games and well, board and one year.
Mr. Menard could come up with a two-year plan instead of a one-year plan now.
And then last but not least, Dan, so you know, the City of New Beffet has finally approved Lake Street.
Yes.
So, I know you had a lot of other priorities.
No, I'm, I'm working on that as well with, you talked with John Romanelli, he's one of the engineers as well. He's actually kinda really crazy, so I'm working with the guy he works with, which Niles from Zenith and he's actually, I got a meeting with him next Thursday. We're gonna meet with Pat and try to get, get that rule.
We just gotta go with the conservation commission, correct?
That's correct, yeah, I'm gonna meet with Pat and him next Thursday, we got a meeting and then we're gonna try to get that notice of intent, go and see if we can confirm it.
Sounds good. Sorry, I didn't have a book on that too, right? Wait, solitude's a different thing. Alright, you guys good? Alright.
Hey Dan, Dan, can you hand that to Kathy?
Yep.
So she doesn't have to wait for.
Oh, okay, cool.
Thank you Bob.
Jamie? Kathy, this one, yeah, because on sewer, I noticed the principal in interest jumped. You, did you see that?
The debt service, that comes from the Treasury's office, that's not me.
Well, it comes from our sewer enterprise fund.
Yeah, the money comes out, they give me the numbers.
Right, but it's all part of our budget is what I'm saying, that's why I'm asking you, have you seen that twenty grand increase or whatever it is?
I'm seeing it, yes, but I was not seeing it before.
That's my point.
Yes, I'm just seeing it.
Okay. Okay. Just making, I, I've seen it.
Right, once the budget's approved, it's gonna affect how we do the rate, rates for next year.
Correct, that's why I'm pointing it out to you now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Conservation, is anybody here from Klein Palm? Jamie, where you at?
We corrected the past mistakes as far as the giving up the salaries and the longevity. And we also took the MS four money out and that's going to be in a separate article.
The only thing that wasn't adjusted, we already talked about this project, I don't know why we're doing it again, but the four. The only thing that wasn't adjusted, we already talked about this budget, I don't know why we're doing it again, but the four fifty for the overtime. Remember I made that comment? It's not enough money based on the amount of time they spend in hours versus the border health overtime.
That was increased in this budget.
I only see four hundred and fifty dollars.
In the Board of Selectment's.
Oh, you're over there now? Okay. I see it. You can make this sheets a little bit smaller, all the print. I double up at home, don't laugh. I mean, I know I can go buy a higher script, but it makes your eyes go goofy. So I just, every once in a while, I cheat with the double pairs just to see what he's doing. I'm like, you know, use enough paper around here, we could just probably use two sheets of paper and make it a little bigger, but.
I.
He does it on purpose with me.
Not me, it's the accountants. I, I sit there with the magnifying glass.
Next up.
As I said prior, we corrected the breakdown in the salary to make sure it's correct.
Rest is pretty level.
Yep.
All right.
Board of Registries, we neglected to deal with when the clerk came in, but these are the figures she needs.
Yep. All right, looks good. Planning?
Planning, I put in, still put in the salary for the planner, that's a discussion that's ongoing. I'm meeting with the planning board on the ninth. If board wants to put a hold on this, there's no problem, it's just a continuing discussion. I wanted to make sure the board knew that.
Yeah, that's not the Board of Selectment's recommendation as far as I'm concerned.
The town accountant. The increases carry over from the this year. And then we also have the step and collars for contractual and the recruitment rate for town accountant. We're not advertising right now because of, we're still going through with Todd. We're making sure all our codes are the same. We've got a MUNIS update coming up in June and he is the expert on it. I don't think we should switch horses yet, but it's up to the board if they want me to go out. But if you got the guy that everybody else is consulting with on your chart of accounts, why not keep him here?
We, we definitely need to talk about that. I mean, we, we got better money now in the budgets. Hopefully Town Meeting approves that better number so that we can go out and advertise. I don't think, you know, the Band-Aid is going to last that long. And, and a number of oppositions that we have employees not staffed in. And the two critical ones, in my opinion, is town treasurer, town accountant. So that's kind of what we, why we needed to up that number because we didn't have nothing in the pool. So hopefully add a little additional salary to it or give us something. And we'll see how that turns out.
And once we get through the MUNIS upgrade in June, if Town Meeting gives us the additional salary, then you can advertise it.
We have flexibility in the new year. Exactly.
Treasurer Collector, same situation. And we put the increase in. And I would note with the board that the total is eighty-five thousand because part of the salary comes from the Gulf Enterprise account. The salary listed there is not marketable. We are out and advertising again. We have one response so far and we're throwing a wider net than we did before. We still need someone who's got certifications. We moved the tax title, attorney fee, as we talked about in the legal budget. Out of this budget, we put it in legal where it belongs. And we added fifteen from, fifteen thousand from town postage because there's a contractually, we, we contract with the provider to send out our bills and we were spending from multiple accounts with one provider. And under advice of the accountant, it's cleaner to do it this way. Any questions?
Hank, please, Hank.
Mr. Chairman, while we're on budgets. With all the reshuffling, and I know I'm trying to keep track of things as best as I can. I don't know if you could create through the town accountant's office a spreadsheet and show us all of that, right? So where the budgets were, the money that's been shifted, the plus and minus, where we're at to date with budgets. So we might have done some deficit reductions and then there's other budgets that are going to go up. So see what the two, right, increases and then decreases where they came from.
The, as you know, we put them in the margins. We'll, I'll see if we can do a spreadsheet that, it's almost a flow chart.
Well, it just, it just showed up where the money's been shifted. I'm already doing it, but I'd like to see something from my town accountant. I'm sure he, he's got a handle on all that with all his expertise. He can give us a spreadsheet and say, you know, this went to this, like the technology went. We know a lot of things were shuffled there, right? Buildings, we did the janitorial services shuffled there and the reasons why that went up.
And we found mistakes from past administrations and how they divided.
Any minuses, so we know where we're at. I mean, before we're talking, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit for the budgets, but we know state aid, whatever cockamamie method the new governor's been using, I don't again like it. Government has a weird way of playing around with tax dollars and, you know, stealing from stabilization is probably not the best choice that she's made so far as a new governor.
I, would you want, for example, building department, town building department plus so much in salary and why?
No, I just think, no, I just think, just guys, give the numbers.
Can you guys work offline?
Just give the numbers.
What you want?
Okay.
Come up with a template? Because I got it. Instead of trying to hash it out here, you guys work offline and come up with a.
In the, in the FYI for the board, I have a memo that describes a lot of what's been going on recently in light of the changes on the state level and how, where we're at. As you know, all of the budgets presented are preliminary budgets. We're still not balanced. We're anywhere from, and that's assuming that the school budgets come in as the superintendents have said they will. We're about two hundred thousand out of balance right now. So we're going to have to keep looking at the budget. But that's also, we haven't changed the revenue figures in light of some of the things that have happened recently. For example, water charges, et cetera. So we've got to look at, it's still a moving target, but state aid did help. So just keeping the board abreast of what's going on, there's about a five or six-page memo with some backup in your FYI.
Okay. All right. And the new business. We're going to table the first item. Mr. Mazraq, we're going to bring him in in an evening meeting to recognize him and hopefully his family can attend. Next item, open meeting law complaint, Selco Tower on Leonard Street. Apparently, a couple residents complained that both the Board of Selectmen and the zoning Board of Appeals violated open meeting law, acknowledged two open meeting law complaints filed against the ZBA Board of Selectmen by Richard Miranda Junior and Daniel Burgess, respectively dated February seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. And February twentieth, twenty twenty-three, discuss, so we are acknowledging receipt of that complaint. We have entered it into the record and we need to send this off to council to compare response. Is there a motion to send off the prime of town?
Mr. Chairman, the response is in the packet. The draft response, we have to fill in a couple dates of when the ZPA is going to meet on this. So I would ask that the board make a motion to approve council's response.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next one is intrapreneurial agreement for emergency motor vehicle technician services. Fire chief is not here, so is the motion to table?
So moved.
It's on the request of the fire chief.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is solitude. Gentlemen, we approved a contract a couple of years ago to move forward with remediating weeds. Now that we've gotten approval from the city, I think we can move forward with it. Unfortunately, the price of the contract has gone up a little bit. So with that said, Mr. Daggett, who's been before us a number of times, has asked, he's been the point person on this, asked that the board approve this, we can get this process moving. There is going to be a permitting process and notification process and there'll be an open and transparent process. But if we drag our feet on this, then, you know, we're going to run the risk of missing the window once again.
Sorry. So I don't, I don't know. I thought I remember this quote as being the same number.
It was like thirty-four.
So it's not, it's not a big deal there. There's just, I don't know if council needs, if this is something new or if there's even been any language, if council needs to look this over. But it just says, by signing this agreement, the customer acknowledges that they have informed solitude late management of all known relevant current site conditions that would be reasonable to expect could affect our ability to successfully complete the contract work. I just ask myself this question, has that been done? If it even needs to be done, Scott would probably know more about that. And then, and then there's this one part about bog owners, it just says, you know, on that page, under the disclaimer thing, it just says the, something about irrigation that goes on, customer understands acknowledges some irrigation restrictions associated with many of the products you use. So I'm assuming that if they're talking about really bog owners that use the fertile water and flood their bogs. And also, I think we need to take into consideration, I believe our golf course uses water from the lakes through the river, distills into the ponds, the little ponds that we have there.
What I understand is a couple days where they just like, although it's not harmful, shut it down.
Yeah, I'm just making sure that those kind of warning things, when they get in there and they're actually going to do it. And I don't know if that needs to be sent out to bog owners, because I know there's some.
That'll be part of the customer responsibilities, providing information, permitting, you know, public findings, notifying of butters, blah, 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 blah.
Yep, that's fine, as long as all that's been done.
Paying them for.
People flooding their bogs with chemicals. I drink cranberry juice.
All right, is there a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And good job getting it out of committee with the City of New Beffet.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. You're welcome. All right. Okay, so on the agenda, there was an issue with our payroll department, with a specific department in town. I think it's serious enough to warrant further review investigation by the town administrator. Is there a motion to activate that?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. But also, from what I understand, there's a larger issue when it comes to people clock in and clock out. I would ask that the town administrator work with our team to make sure that everybody understands what the policy is and if that policy needs to be tweaked, then we should do that. So it's crystal clear. I mean, it's absolutely, you know, I'm a subscribe to the if everybody did it theory, right? Like that's kind of, should be people's North Star when they, how they act on a day-to-day. So if everybody does it, significant, right? And so it's not just a one-off thing. So I'd ask that we report back on the findings of not only this event, but also what the current policy is when it comes to.
Time clock.
Management and/or manipulation. All right.
I think that you're going to have that conversation about how things were handled too, right?
That's what that is. That's, that was the first motion that we approved. And the second one is to look at the overall policy and how.
Because that's unacceptable.
How we do things. All right. Next thing is the Conservation Commission stormwater bylaw amendment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'll ask, I'll, I'll just ask some quick questions and then we probably get rid of this really quick. The same ones that I always ask really, right? It's in front of us. Has the commission voted this? Has this bylaw been reviewed by the town's MS four engineer for compliance with MS four? Has the commission held any public outreach sessions? Multiple sessions are required, ones for commercial and industrial properties. Second one, leased is for residential property owners. So there's a number of things that they need to do before this bylaw even thinks about going to town meeting.
And some other basic questions, Mr. Chairman. I asked the question of who was going to draft the article and I haven't got a clear response yet. The changed bylaw was forwarded with redlined changes in it, but that was it. There was no language for an article. It was, it was not in proper form. I wanted to bring it before the board to let the board know that the clerk and I both have received emails with that, but that's all we've received. The clerk is in discussion with the chair of the Conservation Commission. I don't know how much this board wants management to be involved in this or let the Conservation Commission talk to.
Who submitted it?
It was, it came from the chair.
The chair of the Conservation Commission submitted this bylaw?
So.
But it's not submitted in proper form either.
It's not, first, there's only one thing that's redlined, which means redlined out. So you understand in the, in the towns, meaning people understand what's coming out, what's going in. Red would be what's going in, redlined is what you take it out. There's only one lined that's redlined and, you know. I'm not a rocket scientist when it comes to storm water, but it does say impoundment, which I don't know the definition of that. But according to them is the definition of impoundment would be a stormwater pond created by either construction, an embankment or excavating a pit which retains a permanent pool of water. There's only one problem with that. We don't allow wet pools in, in a town, wet ponds in the town of Acushnet, right?
Retention versus detention.
They're not allowed the whole water.
Retention.
And that's what that's basically identifying. So I'm like, why would you even have that in there when it's not even allowed use? So I, that's why I asked the question is, has our MS four, because the town, we need to be in compliance with our MS four stormwater? Somebody needs to review this and I, I'm not so sure where this came from.
Well, that's why I put it on the agenda because it appeared in an email. There was no proper language as far as an article, no proper format as far as this goes. I want to know how, how much the board wants senior staff involved with this.
It's not, it's not on.
Until it's, you had other things we're going to deal with.
Right, we got, we got financial issues first and foremost, right? Protecting the taxpayer. That's, that's the way I look at it. Budget season's the Super Bowl for all of us. To keep costs down, spending it to a miniscule so you ain't raising taxes, so we don't have people coming in screaming, raise, raise the tax shift.
I'm looking for direction, I've got direction.
All right, next item. Need a representative to steelworkers. Mr. Gasper, would you be willing to do this?
Sure.
Motion to appoint Mr. Gasper.
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yay for me.
Right, we just did the water, wastewater.
Yeah, just giving us the rate increase, like I said, 8.3% forty cent increase from the City of New Bedford on our water and then the wastewater, oh, to 6.67 and that's a 6.7% increase.
All right, uh, AFME reclassification petition, Mr. Hinkley, would you do that?
Uh, yes, I have a meeting with Mr. Kelly and, um, the AFME representative on Monday regarding the police dispatchers. Um, so we're gonna have a conversation with him in regards to this as well and get some background. So as of right now, there's nothing.
Couple of positions, right, I know it mentions the dispatches, but the petition's really coming from somewhere else.
Flarco.
Flarco.
Right.
All right, motion to appoint Mr. Hinkley.
So moved.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Hinkley.
All right, next item, on the whole business, Bristol County Retirement, uh, wants to increase the COLA. I don't know about you gentlemen, nothing against, uh, I just can't vote on something and support something that we're not doing currently in here. I don't understand it, why they would do that in this current time.
This is a request, uh.
Two percent, isn't it? Yeah, well, they wanna go to 5.9.
Yeah, an additional 2% above and beyond the, the existing COLA. Uh, under the law, the county has to vote for it and then a sufficient number of the towns have to vote for it.
Vote no?
Motion to vote no?
Is there a motion to deny?
Vote no.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
It's for municipal.
Next one is Enforcement, 42 South Main Street. You know, gentlemen, I've been beating the drum on this property, I wanna thank Mr. Babola, who has reached out to the property owner and it looks like they are removing large pieces of equipment, cement mixer, boats, all of the above, um, it should not be in that condition, it never should have been. Um, and you think we're gonna stay on top of them until they get that property in compliance? And, um, thanks to Mr. Babola for overseeing that.
I was told that it's hap, I received a phone call that it's happening as you leave.
Okay, because I was there yesterday to check on this issue, I'm like, yay, something's going down. And I'm like, somebody must have took the keys out of the machines because nobody's doing anything. And I was disappointed, so I was like, you know what, we'll just give it a little bit. I mean, like Mr. Wonha, um, his process, at least Mr. Babola got all over it, sent a letter, he's got communications back and forth with the property owner to clean that mess up.
And Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind speaking on that, Mr. Babola has done an extensive amount of everything, the, above and beyond what he's supposed to do and I, I just wanna shout out a little appreciation of that, he, he's replied to everything you've asked for, so. Just to show some appreciation.
All right, very good, good there. Uh, gentlemen, next item is Gulf proposed salary ranges, this was the, uh, the information I think you were looking for, Kevin?
Yeah, we, we just passed over, although we.
We already talked about it, but, you know, on balance, you're looking at $16 to $17, $17.75 to 18 to 20, 19.25 to 20, 22, 27, 65 to 28, 30, so you're not, um, budget busters, but principally I understand the need for review, so.
Do we need to vote on this right now? Or can we just motion to table until we see the?
I think that's.
We already did.
We already tabled that. All together, so. Planning Board Staffing, it looks like we're still in discussion, we can table that.
Motion to table.
So moved.
All right. In favor?
It's nice.
All right, so nice, and we already talked about that, but just so, uh, budget was 116, you know, budget was 110, spent 62,000, we need to order more salt, right? And that's all not from that one storm, but I think it's just.
No, that's replenish the stock for next year, that's what we always do, every year, we, Dan goes out, we use what's from the previous year as much as we can, hopefully it don't run out. And then before that end of the year, he'll replenish it because you never wanna be caught with your bait and suit down and not have CNN salt for the following year, so Dan usually loads the barn up and gets prepared for the following year and hopefully we, we have what we need for the year and sometimes we reorder this during the year, right?
You don't wanna buy salt.
And where we're gonna be processing the bonuses to keep these folks as our contractors.
Excellent. All right, um, nothing else?
Executive session.
Executive session.
Selectment announcements.
Yeah.
Just to remind everybody out there, we have a Soil Board meeting on March 7th, Tuesday, 5:00 PM, Council on Agent, um, to hear, um, the application to the public for PJ Keating, first meeting.
Yep.
I'm done.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
If you don't mind, uh, just a reminder too, if anybody has nothing going on tomorrow, 2:00 to 6:00 at the VFW, uh, pizza for Porter. Uh, he just finished his last radiation treatment today, uh, so there's gonna be a lot of people there, showing some support tomorrow. And, uh, I look forward to seeing everybody there.
Very good. All right, we will be going into executive session under General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21B3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation strategy, ARPA consultant and engineering consultant contracts. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares, and the board will not return to public session. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Will we call hope, Gasper?
Yes.
Mr. Hinkley?
Yes.